Hi.
Hello.
Hi.
Hello. All right, Don, we're going to get started here in about a minute. If you could make sure everything's connected. Ready, set.
Councilman Kelsey is having some connectivity issues. He's trying to log on, so.
Okay, we are at the appointed time, so we'll call the October 4th meeting of the Lincoln Park Mayor and City Council to session or to order. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of allegiance to the flag wherever you are at and then remain standing for the invocation by Reverend Peter Moore of City of Hope Church.
Pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the Son, and to God.
Father, we thank you right now for today is the day that you have made. We should rejoice, be glad in it. Lord, we pray right now that you keep Mrs. Kerry, the clerk, family in prayer in time of need. Father, right now, we thank you again for this tonight, for being alive. Well, we thank you right now. Lord, pray for Mr. Sheldon Allen. Lord, right now, pray for his family, that you keep him in their needs right now. Lord, comfort them in time of need. Lord, pray for the city council and mayor right now, that you keep them, uplift them, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend, and with Kerry, we were saying to learn that Herman Gina Thornley had passed this past week, and Kerry has been very busy here working while all this has been going on, and we appreciate that. Sheldon Allen, quite a character in the city for many years, longtime member of the Public Safety Commission Chair for, it had to be over 15 years anyway.
Yeah.
And then just found out that Hasnell Blankenship, who is the mother-in-law of Heidi Blankenship, and Heidi, of course, was our city controller back in the days when we had city controllers. So with that, we'll move on to roll call.
Councilpersons Dupree, Higgins, Kelsey, Ross, here, Celcedo, Tobin, here, and Mayor Cottles.
Here. Okay, so. I did have those two items, not items, but people that I wanted to be remembered, so I started the mayor's comments a little bit early, so I apologize for that. And this past few days, we've had some very interesting weather, and then before that, we had some major water main breaks, and I thought that I would call on our DPS director as part of my comments here to just give us an update on what is going on with the big rain event we had yesterday and the progress that he has with those major water main breaks that he's still dealing with. So, John, could you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This past Saturday, we had a, in northbound Clark Street, at approximately Kings Highway, we did have a water main break. That was repaired and fixed Saturday. Sunday morning created another issue in the approximate location of Kroger's, which is approximately Southfield and Dix. We ended up with four different water main breaks at that location. One on Philistine, another one on Cleophas, I want to say on the west side of the alley immediately behind Kroger. And then we had two on a Kroger property, and both were coincidentally underneath their two transfer, or not transfer, trying to think of the word, their trans, yeah, transformers, I couldn't think of that. Thank you, everybody. And we ended up with a water main break underneath their two electrical transformers, and then another one between the transformer and the wall immediately behind Kroger. With all of that being said, the water department worked pretty darn hard, and they got the water in that area and back to Kroger last night, Sunday night, about midnight. This weekend for the water department was a very tough weekend, and the water department got everything maintained.
Very good. It's not an easy position that they find themselves. So I know I saw them working on, I think it was Emmons and Abbott on Friday, and it looked like they had a little bit of a mess down there, too. Thank you, John. We appreciate that. I'm sure that was on, everybody was wondering a little bit about that.
Can I ask you a question real quick?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm just curious, that many water main breaks that close together, was there some sort of kind of an event or something that may have caused that?
We're still trying to make that determination. When I look at what they call a GLWA whammer, it gives us, or gives me, the pressures for our three gutter pits where we receive water from Great Lakes Water Authority. And what I did notice is we had small fluctuations in water pressure by approximately two and a half pounds, but part of that, I think, is those two and a half pound fluctuations were in about 15 minutes. And I've requested some information from Great Lakes Water Authority, and I was actually talking to the Hennessy Organization this morning about that, and we're trying to make that determination, but I think a lot of it's boiling down to the age of our water infrastructure. I did contact some of the neighboring communities, and they also had water main breaks, but not nearly as many as we did.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, John, maybe we can expand on that a little bit during the city manager's report, but thank you for that. We have a couple of projects that are going on in town that you may have seen at, of course, Dixon, Emmons, Myers is going through a big change, several million dollars upgrade, but across from there, where Amy Joy used to be years and years ago, there's going to be a stairway car wash going in there. And then very close to our police department and the court, actually, right at Southfield and Lafayette, there is going to be a Taco Bell very soon rising over there. So those are two items of interest, and it's been discussed that we don't share enough of the good things that are going on as far as construction, as far as plans are going to be. So I'm going to start a series of programs where I'll be talking and interviewing people from the city. Carl Malish and then Timery Sved, starting next Tuesday, we're going to, with Don, our videographer, put together a little program about things that are in the works and discussions and how to open a business, basic things of that nature on a trial basis, so that's coming. If you have construction in your neighborhood and you're not happy with how all that is going, I mean, we are there to assist you in that. If you think that work is not being done to the proper standards, we will arrange and we will come out and take a look. What I mean by we, myself or council members with other folks, will come out and see what is going on. We did this just last week at the location of Ferris and White. A homeowner there had some concerns about what was done, and in the process of meeting with GV Cement Hennessy Engineers and John Kazoo was there also, and it was resolved. And that person is happy with the explanation of what was done. Things weren't done differently, it's just that she was worried about certain things not being completed, but when she found out the whole story, then it was good. But if you have problems, we only get limited amount of funds to work on these roads and things, and we want to make sure that it's done exactly the right way, and sometimes we need you to give us that input for that. All right, and that is all that I will do under mayor's comments. We'll move over to our consent agenda. Resolved that the five items listed on the consent agenda be approved as presented to the mayor and city council. One approved minutes for our meeting held September 20, 2021. Two approved minutes, study session, and building department operations held September 20, 2021. Three approved study sessions, sweet sweepers, held September 20, 2021. Four approved study sessions, joint commission meeting held September 27, 2021. Five, set public hearing and DDA strategic plan. Six, set trick-or-treat hours. Seven, solicited bids, joint ceiling. Do we have a discussion? Court call the roll?
Councilperson Celcedo?
Yes.
Dupree? Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Cottles?
Yes. So we move into, oh, no, we're not going to do that. All right, Kerry, we go into the public hearing, that's right?
Public hearing, yes.
I had filed that already, so. There's an information on this, where HUD regulators state we must hold two public hearings per year at different stages of the program year to obtain residents' views, and the first one was held during the annual action plan stage. So I'm going to call the public hearing to order. It is 7:42. And then to help us through this will be community development block grant and parks and recreation director, Doreen Christian. Doreen, are you with us?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me okay?
We can, so.
Okay. The purpose of this public hearing is to report on the CDBG activity for fiscal year 2020-2021. All the activity is reported in depth in the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is the CAPR, which is located on the city website, at the city clerk's office, the library, the community center, and the Office of Community Planning and Development. The CDBG funding is allocated to the city by HUD. We in turn have a public hearing to gather funding requests from public service agencies and department heads. The Community Improvement Commission goes over all the requests and gives their recommendations to mayor and council, who then vote on the use of the funding, and the annual action plan is developed and sent to HUD for approval. The annual action plan is the template of how the money is to be spent and follows the goals of the consolidated five-year plan. During the 2020-2021 program year, $736,554.75 was spent on eligible CDBG activities. This funding came from prior year unexpended funds, current funding, and revolving loan income received from the repayment of residential rehab loans, which expenditures are lower than normal due to COVID. $68,348.37 was spent on public service activities. Of that amount, the city utilized $11,455.47 for community proofing and the crime awareness program. In housing improvement, $133,808.01 from revolving loan funds and prior year's funding was utilized for residential rehab loans and to pay the rehab clerk's salary. Five homes were completed, five more projects are in various stages, and we are trying to contact six more residents to open files. $65,319.24 was expended to replace five sewer leads. This program helps qualified low-income households who cannot afford to have the sewer wires replaced any other way. The furnaces were replaced at the community center, and the ADA platform and door openers went out for bid. $410,386.94 was expended on street and utility work. The gravel porch at the Pennsylvania Avenue was surfaced from Monty to the Dead End. Intersections of Ferris and Stewart, Ferris and Mayflower, and Ferris and Progress were completed, which also replaced the catch basin. Also developed, we also developed the spec and went out to bid for the sewer work between Chandler and Washington from Champagne to Southfield and intermittent intersections from Ukulele to Outer Drive. Lastly, $109,499.85 was spent on administration and planning activities to operate the CDBG program through the Community Planning and Development Office. All the activity improve the availability and accessibility of housing and services for low- to moderate-income persons, improving the affordability of housing and services by enhancing the sustainability of our neighborhood. With the COVID funding received, by June 30 of 2021, 13 business grants were provided with a total expenditure of $195,000. One additional grant was afforded the next fiscal year, which leaves the balance of $85,000. The food bank was afforded $58,377.57, which they are still extending the remaining balance. Public service and health service provision, $40,089.47, which leaves the balance of $12,557.53. Administration expended $2,550. Round three of COVID funding afforded us an additional $178,712. This funding has been earmarked for broadband in the DDA area, but has yet to have the spec written or bid out. The CAPR address of progress achieved in obtaining goals and meeting its priorities. The 15-day public comment period will end on Thursday, October 7, 2021, at 3:00 p.m. All residents, property owners, persons with disabilities, immigrants, seniors, low-income homeless persons, and other stakeholders in the city of Lincoln Park are encouraged to submit written comments or questions regarding the CAPR to Doreen Christian, Community Planning and Development, 3240, Ferris, Lincoln Park, 48146, or email at dchristian@citylp.com. At this time, I would ask if there are any questions for me regarding the CAPR.
Doreen, could you just tell us what CAPR stands for, in case people are wondering out there?
Sure, it's the Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, which is HUD's version of giving us a grade for what we did the prior year with our funding.
Okay, thank you. We'll open it up to council first, and then everyone will be given an opportunity to speak. Is there any discussion from council? Okay, then, James, if you could unmute everyone?
Hi, this is Sean Williams. This is CEO of Detroit Environmental Services. How you guys doing?
I'm doing very well. I missed your name, sir.
Sean, Sean Williams.
Okay.
How you doing?
Doing good.
What was the question? I'm sorry, I had just keyed in on the conversation.
Okay, well, this is, we're having a public hearing about the community development block grant and park rec, community development and block grant and basically how they spent their money and such. Did you comment with that, sir?
I mean, really, I really, the one thing that I had really key listed on was, you know, the water problem, was that one the problem with the water situation?
Well, Sheriff, this is specifically to talk on the public hearing.
I was here inside the conversation.
Well, that was part of the discussion that was earlier, but the public comment for all things involved in the city would be at the end of the meeting. This is public comment specifically for the CDBG public hearing.
Okay, well, I'm still listening. I was still like, still kind of lost on the conversation. I was still keep, I just came back inside. I walked away, and I just came back inside the conversation. So I'm, I'm still there.
Okay, very good. Does anyone else have a discussion for the, for the public hearing? All right, I'm not hearing anything, so we'll adjourn this at, or adjourn the public hearing at 7:51 and reconvene the regular meeting. Moving to the, to the action items, two items have been removed for the agenda as they need some more questions answered for that. One is the removal clause, the planning commissions, and then reject bids, preferred developer. So it has the questions to be answered before those can move on. So we'll move to, we're at the action items.
I'm sorry, Your Honor. Could you repeat that? Is it nine and 10 we're seeking?
No, there are eight and nine.
Eight and nine. Thank you.
Okay. All right, we have resolved that an ordinance to amend Part 14 Title VI of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lincoln Park by repealing and replacing Section 04K definitions, Section 06, areas of special flood hazard, and Section 16, floodproofing standards to Chapter 1450 entitled Flood Damage Prevention be given its third and final reading and adopted and be adopted by title only. City of Lincoln Park ordains that Part 14 of the Codified Ordinance for the City of Lincoln Park Title VI, Chapter 1450 entitled Flood Damage Prevention be and is hereby amended by repealing and replacing Section 04K entitled Definitions, Section 06 entitled Areas of Special Flood Hazard, and Section 16 entitled Flood Proofing Standards as follows. And 1450.04.
We're doing it by title only, so you don't have to.
By title only, so don't need to do that part. Okay, so.
Do we have a move?
I'll move on.
Okay. All support. Sorry, who was that? Whatever. That's why I was confused. All right.
Okay, then open it up for discussion.
Your Honor.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Real briefly, on 1450.06, third line down, it says date, October 21, 2021. I'm sure that date has come forward, yes? I mean, this will be an as not.
No, we talked about this last time, so this is the date that FEMA will adopt it, and it will become effective, is on October 21, 2021.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
Okay, and then there's another date in there of some of the panels that is from February of 2012. That is correct also because those panels were adopted back in 2012 and haven't changed. We're just continuing.
I understand that, thank you.
Okay.
And that was our city clerk, Kerry Curher. So is there further discussion? Then clerk call the roll?
Certainly, council, I'm sorry, Mayor Cottles?
Yes.
Councilperson Tobin? She's muted.
Ross.
Dupree?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
And Celcedo?
Yes.
Eighteen.
Okay, then our next, our next item. Resolved that an ordinance to amend Part 10 Title IV of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Lincoln Park by repealing and replacing Section 1045 entitled County Storm Water Management be given its first and second reading. The City of Lincoln Park ordains that Part 10 of the Codified Ordinance for the City of Lincoln Park Title IV, Chapter 1045 entitled County Storm Water Management be and is hereby amended by repealing and replacing the entire chapter as follows. 1045.01, adoption of county storm water management ordinance. The City of Lincoln Park hereby adopts, incorporates herein by reference, and makes a part of this chapter the Wayne County Storm Water Management Ordinance for the City of Lincoln Park. Copies of this ordinance, as amended and adopted by Wayne County on August 19, 2021, are available for inspection and review at the Office of the City Clerk.
Hello? Stay forward.
All right, discussion? Okay, clerk call the roll?
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Dupree?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Celcedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Cottles?
Yes. Next item that we have has a cover letter from our chief of police, Raymond Waters, and the subject, amendment to towing and management service contract. And in information, Gottson Sons is requesting to add lines 18 and 19 to Appendix B. Line 18 would be a $150 flat fee billed to insurance companies. This is a fee worked out with the insurance company for Gottson Sons to transfer the title to them and release the vehicle to their custody. Line 19 is a $75 third-party gate release fee for outside wreckers. This is only charged when an outside company enters our yard to remove a vehicle, discovers the time of the Gottson employee to escort the third-party driver in the police impound lot and any potential damage from that third-party wrecker driver. So we have done the resolution. Whereas the City of Lincoln Park and Gottson Sons Towing Incorporated entered into a contract on or about October 14, 2020 for the towing and management services, and whereas the parties now wish to amend Appendix B of said contract to provide two additional fees to the towing fees list to include 18, number 18, third-party release and transfer, class D dealer, billed only to insurance companies as requested, $150. 19, third-party gate and release for outside wreckers, $75 light duty, $200 heavy duty. Therefore be resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign the aforementioned amendments to the towing and management services contract.
Does someone have a question?
I'll support. And go ahead.
Um, why was it this court when we signed the original contract? And what was the procedure under the last towing company?
I was going to head to Chief Waters for an explanation, and in the process he can answer your questions, so too. Chief, are you with us? Chief Waters?
Uh, yes, sir, can you hear me?
Yep, that we got you.
So if you remember, we kind of rushed through this contract when we approved the towing contract last year. This was just left out. It wasn't anything, any malicious actions or anything like that. It was just something that was overlooked and left out. Past tow company, you know, I, they did a lot, a lot that wasn't covered under their contracts. I, they billed out a lot of things that they probably shouldn't. So I really can't compare the two. We talked about apples and oranges. But we're trying to put, do the right thing by putting this in the contract where things may not have been done properly in the past. We want to, we have a vendor that does things the right way, so that's what we're trying to continue on with. You know, I spoke with the owner about moving forward and he's 100% on board with this, and this is fees that mostly are charged to insurance companies anyways.
Okay, did you hear Councilman Higgins's questions? Why don't you, Councilman, why don't you repeat those?
Did he answer my questions exactly?
All right, then, very good.
Did he answer the...
I'm walking down and reading.
Okay, do we have? We have further?
Yes, Your Honor.
Um, I know. I understand that. I understand that. Just saying.
Can you be able to talk to the meetings as it's needed?
Yes, as it's needed.
Okay, then. Okay, Your Honor.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. I'd like to know if these fees have been charged since the beginning of the contract.
Yeah, I see them. So I did that for nothing?
I mean, we know, we know, you guys, that's what brought, what brought us to our attention. So, but I know that that invoice that, that we received was from August. I'd like, of this year, so I'd like to know if these charges, um, have been, have been collected since the beginning of the contract.
They have, with the uniforming system.
So, yes, they've been collected prior because, especially for 18, because 18, if you look at it, it's billed to insurance companies at their request. So that is something that insurance companies are actually asking Gottschund Sons to do. This is, they find it easier if they just have the wrecker company do it. It's transferring all the titles and, and things like that. So basically, 18 is if you have your car totaled completely out, you're not going to take possession of it anymore. And Gotts takes care of all the paperwork, transfers it over to insurance companies, and this is something that the insurance companies ask, excuse me, actually asking them to do, it's easier on them to do. So that's something that's been going on from the whole time. This is just something that we want to be transparent on so that everyone sees what it is and that there's no, there's no questions asked about what's going on.
Well, Chief, you know, you're saying to be transparent, if this has been going on since last October and it's, we're just getting, getting this information, I don't think that that's being transparent. I found in the contract, if you, if you go to page six of the towing contract, under Appendix A and the letter G, it states the contractor must abide by the standard table of fees established by his bid as set for on the, on Appendix B for the term of this agreement.
Can I interject?
Hold on, hold on, sir. We'll let you in in just a moment. Councilman, go ahead.
And then if you, if you go to page 10 of the contract, under fees and charges, it said that the contractor, the contract under B, the contractor shall predominantly post at the impound lot a list of towing and storage charges, hours of operation as approved by the city. I don't believe that that's been done either. My point being that nobody really would have known that these charges were, were being charged to, to people if it wasn't brought to our attention as a complaint.
Well, I can tell you that we have looked at the past 30 days of billing and we didn't find any discrepancies whatsoever and any other issues.
I'd like to know then how many times, how many times have these charges been, been charged to, to, to people? A number, going back to the beginning of the contract. I'm not happy with this at all.
Okay, well, we have the, we have the contractor here. I think, Chief, with your, I guess, permission, we'll, we'll bring him on, or do you have something more you'd like to say?
Uh, no, absolutely bring him on and have him explain what's going on.
Okay, very good. And we have Mr. Gotts, Michael Gotts, right, who's the owner of the, no, welcome to the meeting, sir. You've, you've heard, you've heard the discussion Councilman Ross has, has brought up.
Mm-hmm.
And you wanted to rebut, rebut before, but, but go ahead, sir.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry I interjected at the wrong time. The, these fees that we're asking for are customary fees in our industry. So the one fee where it's the vehicle transfer, the insurance company is asking us to do this, and yet that is the negotiated rate that the insurance companies pay. So we're transferring the ownership between the insured and the insurance company, and in that process, you know, we're helping the people clean out their car, remove their license plate, we're transferring the title because we are a Class B dealer. So we're able to handle the titles without putting our name on it. If you're not a Class B dealer, you can't do that service. Our company offers that service, and that is a fee that we've charged for probably five or six years now since the insurance company started doing that. The other fee is a gate fee, which involves, it's when the insurance, now 90% of the time, I can't say 100% because I'd be lying. So 90% of the time, the gate fee is paid by the insurance company because it's a car that's been totaled. Now, these cars that are sitting at the impound yard that are totaled sit there for 20, 30 days. So in that time period, other cars are being placed in front of them and they're being blocked in. So we then have to send out one of our tow trucks along with the third-party tow, towing company to get these cars out for them. So we have to move several cars. We might have to help them with, big rocks, we'll bring a front-end loader down to help them. But when we go down there, you know, we're, we're making sure that no other cars get damaged. We're, we're moving these other cars that are in the way that people own and making sure they're not damaged. So the third-party tower, which is, like I said, 90%, the insurance company, is coming there to get the car and they're taking it to an auto salvage pool. Like, I don't know if you've noticed that big parking lot, like at 75 and West Road, that's where most of these cars are going, and then they're auctioned off. So it's the insurance company picking up these fees. Did that help explain it?
I understand what you're saying, sir. And whether the insurance company is paying this or not, it wasn't in the initial contract. And as far as, you know, you guys moving cars around on the lot, that's what you do. That, that's your job.
Well, can I respond?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, well, our job is, nobody thought of this. I mean, when the bid was put out, there's a lot of things in there, but, um, like the chief said, it was just overlooked. It's kind of a different circumstance the City of Lincoln Park has where you don't have an office at the tow yard and you don't have equipment at the tow yard. So equipment has to be drove down there and manpower has to be used to move this stuff around and to make sure these other cars that are in storage aren't being damaged. So, I mean, it's really unique the way you do it. It's not, um, it's not, it's not standard.
It isn't standard.
Nobody thought of it. Well, it's, it's in our, nobody has a tow truck there for people. It's unmanned.
But we knew this, we knew this, and Mr. Gotts, you knew this going in.
We're not having the conversation here. It says, you need to, you need to be recognized before you speak, okay? So go ahead.
I'm just saying, Your Honor, that, um, we all knew this because these were questions that we asked when, um, when this contract came up, was if they were going to have an office there. And we were told no, that they were so close that it wouldn't be a problem. So I'm going to leave it at that for right now, if anybody else has anything to add.
Okay, well, you have, the issue here, or one of the issues here, is that they recognize the need for these, these charges, and they're asking for the contract to be, to be updated. There are questions about that these may have been charged unauthorized version in the past. I think that was addressed at, at the meeting, I don't know, about, about two weeks ago. I mean, whether that, that was right or not, I think it was, it was spoken to in reference to that. But what we're talking about here, as I see it, is do we change the contract moving forward to where these fees are allowed? So further discussion? Do you have, any, other counsel wish to be heard?
To the chair, by name?
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I have to agree with the Councilwoman, Councilwoman Ross, plus the fact I drove down to DPD today. Jack can verify that because he's on the thing. There is no fees or things posted on the main gate or the gate to the, to the storage area. You know, how many other things are we missing in this contract? I mean, I shouldn't have to drive down here quite frankly, and I'm making a statement because I think it's important to say that to the council. You know, if this contract, and I just, I apologize for coming in late. I had a problem with my computer, but I caught part of Cheese Waters', you know, comment and all that about it was a rush for the contract or whatever. And it seems like it was. Seems like this contract was a rush because we supposedly had an issue with, or we did have an issue with the other contractor. And all of a sudden we get into this and, and quite frankly, the police department's supposed to be looking over these invoices. Nobody ever caught it for a year or close to a year. Second thing is that they never posted the fees down there like they're supposed to. Third of all, we talked about them not having an office down here. If I remember correctly, they're on Sheppard and Detroit on Port Street. They said it would take one to come down here and get the vehicle and meet the person because they do have access. And that's another thing. How many access cards do they have? You know, I'd like to know how many access cards they have to the yard. If it's a towing company, they shouldn't have 15, 20, or whatever. These are questions, Your Honor, to the chair that, that I think we need to put a hold on this and ask some of the questions that I'd like to have answers, quite frankly. Or I would have thought twice about voting for the contract because that's how I voted originally was based on the original contract that was presented to us until this stuff come up. And I'm not saying anything bad. I'm just saying I need to get more information about what's going on. And, you know, I also went into, and this is outside issue, but I went on the Better Business website, and they didn't rate the company too well for resolving complaints. Now, I did notice that the only two companies that I'm aware of, two of them down in Lincoln, South Gate, and I think River View that are actually, that the business bureau actually endorsed, okay? So my comment is they are extension of us. Our vendor is an extension on how we do things. And I'm going to leave it like that. I'm not happy either, and I think we need to put a hold on this till we get some more answers. Thank you, Your Honor.
All right, sir. Anything else from, from council?
To the chair, Your Honor, real fast.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
There's an hypothetical. Little Johnny gets his car towed, right? It's in the tow yard for three days. Now he's going to get it out, all right? So now he's going to pay $35 for an outside wrecker. Plus, is he also going to pay a fee for goats towing the car there?
Well, there are the, the standard tow fees, sir, and if Johnny is getting the car out on his, on his own, or if it's drivable, then I think the standard rate for that is, is $35. But if another wrecker comes down, I mean, I examined 30 days of, of the bills. I think it was, in preparation for the, for the last meeting, the, the most recent ones, and circumstances that you report, I saw that it was a $35 fee that was with that. Where it came to is with, well, I better let the chief and/or the, the owner expand on, expand on that. Do you have, Mr. Gotts, do you have?
The simple answer to the last question is no, he wouldn't be paying that. He would just be driving the car out. Like I said before, this fee is 90% of the time is for an insurance company with a car that is totaled that they're picking up at the yard. The fee is simply, you know, we insure the yard. We take on the insurance. We pay the policy for that yard for its garage keepers. We, we have to go when the wrecker's in there. We have to make sure they're not damaging somebody else's car when they're moving cars around. This is a standard industry fee that, in the towing industry, that everybody charges. This isn't unique to us by any means. Every towing company charges this when you come into their yard, a gate fee. In any tower that is a Class B dealer, which more and more of them are becoming, are handling the transfer too. And that's just a, again, that's a fee that insurance companies asking for. People ask for stuff all the time. They'll ask us to do a jump start. Hey, my car won't start. Can you jump start it while it's there? So, you know, there's, or their car will get a flat tire while it's in the yard, and they'll ask us if we can change the tire. Things, things come up that are down there that aren't all addressed, and that people are asking us for this, like, hey, can you change my tire? Or can you tow my car home for me if it's inoperable? These fees are just mostly for insurance companies. And then, oh, I wanted to comment on the Better Business Bureau. The Better Business Bureau isn't a government agency. It's an advertisement agency. I don't pay the Better Business Bureau. If you don't believe me, you have to go on there and try to sign up for yourself. The more you pay, the better rating you get.
Mr. Gotts, that's, we're getting far afield here. We're concentrating on the, on the contract and everything that goes with it. Now, there are provisions in the contract that allow you to make additional charges, either for additional labor or something along those lines.
That's right.
So if somebody had to have a jump start, or somebody had to have a tire changed, you're allowed to, to make cost adjustments for that, correct?
Yeah, we try to accommodate it whenever the customer needs.
Okay. But how much, now, the, the yard itself down there, has there been investment by you to upgrade that? That's a little bit on the side, but...
Well, um, yes, we, we spent nearly $10,000 upgrading that yard. We put in, repaired all the fencing. We put fence screening in, and we put a state-of-the-art surveillance camera system, I believe it's four or six cameras, that can both be viewed at the police station and at our main office, along with, we did additional lighting, and we put some provisions in there for trash and rubbish, as well as a trailer in there to house materials for like covering windows when car windows are broken out.
I got you. And the, there was a complaint about the lack of, of a sign there. Is that something that you can take care of?
I can take care of it. I, we have a sign up for the... I can take care of it. I, we have a sign up for the auctioning. I didn't realize, and it's my whole father, I got no one to blame, about the other, but we have a big four-by-eight sign up on the gate where people walk in with all the uh, fees for the auction. And maybe I misunderstood it, but as far as the other one, I can have a sign made and put up. We, we put probably two dozen signs up all around the yard.
Yes.
Already.
So, but as we're going through this, just work with the chief to get that, get that accomplished. Um, chief, I just, question, is it your opinion that these fees are, are necessary, that it needed, and, and should be done?
Yes, sir, I do believe that they're, they're necessary and should be um, added to the contract. Um, it's, like I said, eighteen is something that the insurance companies are asking them to do. And then nineteen is, is taking their wrecker driver away. It's when the third party comes in. It is something that should be charged. It, and those are on rare occasions also. When I talked to um, Mr. Gosh about it in the past, he said approximately maybe four a month are um, in that uh, area for the um, for a charge which would, which would be nineteen. But I do believe those should be added to it, yes.
Okay, um, further comment from, from counsel? Discussion from counsel?
I've got a last comment through the chair, by name?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I just think it's, it's, it's gotta be a little bit looked at. I mean, some of these things are minor, but these were all issues in the contract. These were all things that we asked the vendor do and they agreed to do it. We had it, evidently somebody overlooked this. I don't know if it was Ed or somebody looked it over. And I'm assuming everything was in, in the quite, quite order. And then this issue come up. And the other thing is, is that, you know, when you're going from the fact that we had a towing place in Lincoln Park and then we went to a different one, we knew there'd be some exceptions to the rules and all that. But you're getting a person getting towed to Lincoln Park and they're getting towed that by the example of the one that I brought to the city manager, you're talking four hundred dollars to get that vehicle out. I mean, that's, our city's five square miles. Down to the Shaker and the uh, Ford Street is not twenty-five, thirty, forty, fifty miles. I mean, we're charging, we're all in charging a lot of, I think it's two hundred dollars for a heavy-duty truck to come in. Not their truck, but a heavy-duty truck from somebody else to come in. You can drive from that gate from DPS back, it ain't gonna cost you no two hundred dollars. I can guarantee you that. Now, my question is, where is the, the justification to make a profit, to do your business correctly, and I understand that, and the profit of where we get away from the consensus of having a, a, a program that works? And that's my issue, okay? I mean, I just think we need to take a look at this contract, and I've said it once before and I'll say it again, because I don't think these fees are, 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 are too uh, high. I think they need to be looked at though, and I also need to find out why we didn't catch it until somebody complained eight, ten, eleven, twelve months later. I mean, we're supposed to have a safety net process. Well, I got it. And I'd like to know, Your Honor, I still haven't had the question, how many card access keys does Gosh Company have to get in and out of that yard?
Well, that is something that the city manager can direct later on through this. That's not part of what we're talking about right now, though.
Well, it's part of another issue. That's why I asked the issue, Your Honor.
Well, as part of that, as that, part of that other issue, they were completely exonerated by the investigation.
I didn't say that. I'm talking about the fact that who have access to the yard. I don't have access to the yard, Your Honor. I'm an elected official. I have to go through the car. I don't have a car. I shouldn't have one, but I'm an elected official. I'm sure you don't have one, Your Honor. I mean, we do that for a reason. What I'm saying is, putting out one card is fine, putting out two cards is fine, putting out twenty-five cards is a little ridiculous. And I'll leave that, again.
After this, we can, we can direct that to the city manager and he can, he can look into that. Any further discussion on the contract?
Your Honor?
Addiction, yes, go ahead.
I, I would like to put it on these eighteen and nineteen separately. Because I think one was explained wrong, but I wouldn't have an issue with, with the other one I do.
Okay, sir, are you, are you moving on that? Are you making a motion?
Yeah, I would move on that if somebody will support. I'll support.
Okay, so we have um, a resolution on um, an amendment, amendment to the resolution. So, is there any discussion on the amendment to the resolution? Then um, clerk then called the roll for the um, for the amendment, and the amendment would be to...
Split this into two resolutions, one for eighteen and one for nineteen?
Yes.
Councilperson Higgins?
Tobin?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Ross?
No.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Cars?
Yes. All right, so that resolution passed, and now we have, the amendment passed, and now we have two resolutions then. And the first resolution would be for number eighteen, the third-party release and transfer Class B dealer, bill the only insurance company has requested one hundred and fifty dollars. So, is there discussion on the first, the first amendment? I meant, discussion on uh, on the number eighteen resolution?
Through the chair?
Yes, ma'am.
How many of these um, third-party transfers go happen on a regular basis? I mean, is this something that happens multiple times per month, or is this something that is infrequent?
When I went through the, the month of, I think there were, there were three of them, but um, Mr. Gosh, would you be able to advise on that?
Yeah, on average, it is three or four. It's not, it's only, like I said, mostly total-out cars the insurance company's picking up. Okay. And when they pick them, pick them up to, the, is there gonna be a gate fee charged for them to come in and pick them up on top of this hundred dollar, hundred-and-fifty-dollar fee? No, not necessarily. Only if the insurance company wanted us to char, uh, do the transfer for them. Okay, but I'm saying, when you, when you release for outside wreckers, so are they gonna be charged for the, the light duty and the heavy duty on top of that hundred and fifty? Well, I'm not quite sure I understand, but like, on a heavy duty, we've never even had a heavy duty in a year for the city of Lincoln Park. So, it's never occurred yet. The only thing that has occurred is light duty cars that have been totaled out and the insurance companies want to come get them. So, no. And not necessarily would they be charged it.
I think that, and maybe if I can clarify that, the councilwoman's position, do you have, the third-party release at, at a hundred and fifty dollars, if that third-party, then the transfer of that needs to be towed out of the yard, and it's been there for a couple weeks, would they still be looking at the seventy-five dollar fee for the third-party gate and release?
The answer is yes. If the insurance company wants us to do the, the dealer transfer, then we would charge them for the dealer transfer. Then they would ultimately be sending down another wrecker that would come down maybe three, four, maybe a week later to pick up the car. Then, we would charge a gate fee to facilitate getting that car out for them. So, I mean, this usually takes like an hour when a tow, a third-party tower comes down. We have to go send a truck down there and help it. It's about sixty minutes of work on that.
Okay, councilwoman, did that answer your question?
Yes, it did. I'm sorry if I didn't put it right.
No, no, you're fine. Do, do you have more?
No, I'm, I'm done.
Okay, um, further discussion by counsel on the eighteen resolution? And the court called the roll?
Councilperson, I'm sorry, yeah, councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Mayor Cars?
Yes.
Councilperson Dupre?
Yes.
I'm sorry, yes. Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
No.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Tobin?
No.
That motion passed.
Okay, then moving on to what I'm going to call the um, nineteen resolution, which would be third-party gate and release for outside wreckers, seventy-five dollars, light duty, two hundred dollars, the heavy duty. It's been moved and, and supported before it was split, so we have further discussion on the number nineteen resolution. Okay, then court called the roll?
Higgins?
No.
No?
No.
Cars?
Yes.
Dupre? Sorry, I can't hear you, councilwoman.
Yes, I'm sorry, I was thinking.
Okay. I, I'm sorry, I thought you, I thought I saw you talking. Kelsey?
No.
Ross?
No.
Salsedo?
No.
And councilwoman Tobin?
No.
That motion failed.
Okay, then we'll move on to uh, our next item. I believe that this is, has a cover letter from John Kazoo, our director of uh, public services. Department of Public Services looking to purchase two vehicles. DPS would like to waive the bid process and use the state of Michigan bid price under my bid. Uh, contract from Gornell Ford. Tracks of DPS is requesting purchases one twenty-two Ford F-250 four-by-four super cab pickup with pow package and twenty-two Ford F-550 XL four-by-four uh, R slash cab with pow and salt spreader package. So, the resolution is, be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby grant authorization to waive the bid process and use the bid contract number zero-seven-one-B-seven-seven-zero-zero-one-eight-one for DPS to purchase from Gornell Ford a twenty-two Ford F-250 four-by-four super cab pickup with pow package for thirty-four thousand five-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. A twenty-two Ford F-550 XL four-by-four R slash cab with pow and salt spreader package for seventy-seven thousand two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. For total cost not to exceed one hundred and eleven thousand seven-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. To come from fleet management capital expenses account six-six-one-dash-nine-three-two-dash-nine-eight-three-zero-zero-zero. Discussion?
Chair, please?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Do we typically pay cash for these vehicles, or do we finance them?
John, if you could. You're muted, sir.
Typically, in the past, what the city has done, the city has paid for those outright.
Thank you.
Okay, I heard the councilwoman Tobin first, I believe.
Um, I just, I wanna ask John, what, what are we using now um, for the services that these vehicles will be supplying?
We, these are, would be simple replacements for older vehicles. And once these vehicles were delivered, then it would come back to you and ask that these older vehicles be then auctioned off.
And how old are these vehicles?
One of them is presently fourteen years old, and the other one, I think, is seventeen years old.
Okay, thank you.
Council president, go ahead.
Yes, yes, Mr. Kazoo, yes or no answer? Will these be ready for the twenty-two winner season?
I guess a lot of it's gonna be dependent on when, where the manufacturers are able to get the E-chips, electronic chips. From my understanding, there's quite a backlog of trying to get those electronic chips.
That's why that's the question. I don't wanna be getting these trucks in uh, next May if we're not gonna use them, but I'm done, thank you. Just wanna bring that up.
Okay, further discussion? Court called the roll?
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Cars?
Yes. Next, we have a cover letter from Durin Christian, our director of community planning development and parks and recreation. And it has to do with the awarded bid for twenty-two fifteen Seacott cleanout house and garage. Um, they had five bids. Well, let me, yeah, I'll go ahead and just uh, read the bids out first. You had Axe Now at thirteen thousand eight-hundred-and-fifty dollars and fourteen days to complete. CNS Construction Management at nine thousand eight hundred dollars for fifteen days to complete. Moe on the Go, eight thousand four-hundred-and-ninety-eight dollars and seven cents for three days to complete. Net Solutions LLC, seven thousand five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and ninety-five cents and completed in three days. Detroit Environmental Services, two thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars to complete in ten days. And, whereas the city acquired two-two-one-five Seacott from the first writ of refusal, and whereas the property needs to be cleared of contents in the house and garage before it can be renovated, whereas the city solicited bids to clean out house and garage, therefore be it resolved that Detroit Environmental Service Services be awarded the job to remove all contents in the house and garage, a price not to exceed two thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars. Funds to come from account number two-four-nine-dash-zero-four-five-dash-seven-two-one-H-I-P. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign all necessary documents.
I'm in support.
Okay, discussion?
I'll turn to the chair.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Are we getting reimbursed when we get rid of this house and some of these expenditures that we're paying on this proposal here for the cleaning? Is there gonna be a reimbursement when the house is first writ of refusal? So, obviously, somebody's gonna fix it up and sell it. I mean, are we gonna get paid for the fact that we cleaned it up and we lost or put in twenty-nine hundred dollars?
Well, I can have...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Your Honor.
Well, I'm gonna say that um, I think that uh, CDBG is gonna be used to um, repair the home and then put it up for sale. So, Durin, would the city be made whole of anything that they spent?
Yeah. It's actually all coming out of CDBG funds in the first place. It's not gonna come out of any of the city funding.
Okay, very good. Does that answer your question, councilman?
Yeah, I think through the chair she said we'd be made whole, so yes, that does answer.
Okay, very good. Further discussion?
Through the chair, please?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Do we have experience with any of these companies?
There you go, Durin.
Uh, no, we, no, we've not. Um, we did meet with them all at the house. The one that um, is the lowest bidder, that is all they do. I have heard good things. I had looked it up on the SAM.gov excluded party listing, and there was no listing of it whatsoever. I'm for them to be excluded for any reason.
It, it, the bid is so much lower is my concern, but they, well, good, I'm glad. Thank you.
I, I checked that out because of that reason too, and it's because that's all they do.
Right.
Is cleaning. So, they can, but yeah, they can do it at a cheaper price.
Durin, we normally have our, our engineering company oversee projects that we have. In this case, who's gonna be overseeing the, the cleanout? To make sure they're doing what they're supposed to be doing?
They're not gonna get paid until we go through it and it's completely cleared out. So, we will go through the house. Um, and if, as long as I don't have to wear gas masks to get into it, we will go through everything to make sure everything is gone completely to the bare walls. And they're supposed to also sanitize a few areas that are gonna have to be sanitized due to the situation going on there. John Myers has also gone through the house and he will go through it with us to make sure everything has been done properly. sure everything has been done properly.
Okay. Anything further from council? Any other discussion? Okay. Court call the roll.
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Kelsey? Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carrance?
Yes. So, we... Next item also is a cover letter from Doreen Christian, Community Planning Development, Parks and Recreation. And it has to do with vegetation removal from two-two-one-five Seacott. The three bidders on this proposal were CNS Construction Management at nine thousand one hundred dollars with no bid on the large tree in the backyard, days to complete at fifteen, mow on the go at four thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars and twenty cents. Again, no bid on the large tree in the backyard and then days to complete two. And then Net Solutions LLC, vegetation costs of three thousand five hundred dollars, large tree backyard costs of one thousand five hundred dollars, days to complete in three days. So whereas the city acquired two-two-one-five Seacott from the first right of refusal and whereas the city, whereas the property needs to be cleared of vegetation before it can be renovated. And whereas the city solicited bids to remove all vegetation and a large tree in the backyard, therefore be it resolved that Net Solutions LLC be awarded the job to remove all vegetation and the large tree in the backyard for a price not to exceed five thousand dollars. Funds to come from account number two-four-nine-dash-zero-four-five-dash-seven-two-one-HIP. Be it further resolved that the mayor and city clerk are authorized to sign all necessary documents. Do we have discussion?
To the chair, your honor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to know why we're getting rid of the tree.
The tree is humongous. That is overgrowing the neighbor's yard ninety-five percent of the way. I've never seen a tree that wide and circumference, and I'm worried about you put a low to low mod income family there and that tree has so many dead branches, they will not be able to afford to take it down.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, further, further discussion? Court call the roll.
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre? Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross? Salsedo?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Carrance?
Yes. All right, the next item has a cover letter from John Kazoo, our DPS director. And it's design services and building support, Emmens Pump Station and Lincoln Pump Station Underground Storage Tanks. In background, as part of the city Lincoln Park's asset management capital improvement plan, the city must remove two six-thousand gallon diesel underground storage tanks or USTs that supply diesel fuel to the generators at the Emmens and Lincoln Pump Station. Then the second part of this plan is to design pump stations improvements to upgrade these older pump stations to improve their pumping capabilities and reliability. So be it resolved that the mayor and city council hereby approve the Hennessy Engineers Incorporated and Fishbeck Proposals for the Emmens and Lincoln Pump Stations UST removal and improvements as specified in the Hennessy Engineers Incorporated and Fishbeck Proposals dated September twenty-four, twenty-twenty-one, not to exceed five hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred dollars to come out of the budget of American Recovery Plan Act, ARPA.
Move before...
Then in discussion, John, usually, or in the past, when we had proposals from a contractor, they were separate from the Hennessy's engineers overseeing of the project. Is there a reason why they're combined this time?
Uh, Fishbeck has always worked with Hennessy Engineering for approximately the last six years where we've had to do some asset management work. And they're kind of like Hennessy's sanitary consulting engineers. Hennessy doesn't specialize in this type of work. And so they have teamed up with Fishbeck for our work. And also Jim is, I think, on here also, where he could also add to that conversation. Jim, are you there?
This is all about the engineering part of the project?
Yes, the designing, yes, sir.
Okay. Then that answers my question. Mr. Hollins, did you want to have a comment?
No, I could comment. This is going to be the design for the two pump stations, Emmens and Lincoln, which, as you may recall, these two pump stations handle all the excess flows and they pump it directly to the retention basin. So these pump stations were built in the nineteen forties and nineteen fifties. And so what we're doing is we're going to redesign these pump stations. They'll have all new pumps, all new telemetry. We'll add additions to the pump stations, a different housing to hold all the telemetry so, for the pump controls and all that. So it's just an upgrade to old pump stations and that's kind of what we're going to be doing on this. The same thing with the fuel tanks, those have been in the ground, I think, since nineteen eighties. They do not have the current, they don't meet the current requirements for, you know, monitoring whether or not something's spilt. We did have them tested in the past and so far we haven't encountered any leaks. So, but we do need to replace those and upgrade them to meet the current requirements for the EPA and that.
And that would also include a replacement of both generators, one generator at each pump station.
Okay, this is all, all the design part of the project, correct?
Yes, the, it is designed and they will also put together the bid packages and they'll also help the city with bidding out this work.
Okay, it's all at the beginning, so, okay. Further discussion? Hearing none, court call the roll.
Councilperson Higgins?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Dupre? Kelsey?
Yes.
Ross?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
And Mayor Carrance?
Yes. Next item has a cover letter from our city manager, Mr. Grisant. With the conclusion of the twenty-twenty decennial census, the new Michigan Independent Citizen Redistricting Commission, MICRC, began their work to divide the state into one hundred and ten legislative and thirty-eight state senate and thirteen congressional districts. The MICRC was created by a citizen-initiated amendment to the state constitution. The purpose was to create a nonpartisan redistricting commission that would redraw district lines. Previously, the districts were created by the legislature. Various proposed drafts and district maps have been published. These drafts show all of Down River area broken in three various districts for representation in the US House of Representatives. Also note that proposed district map show Lincoln Park broken into two different Michigan House of Representative districts. And then we have in June of twenty-twenty-one, the Down River Community Conference, DCC, and the Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber adopted a joint resolution supporting redistricting to encompass the entire region into a single US congressional district. The DCC and the SWCRC is then asking for supports to various communities. So whereas the Down River Community Conference, DCC, a consortium of twenty Down River communities in Wayne County, whose total population exceeds five hundred thousand, has joined in an effort to improve local government, enhance the quality of life for area residents through municipal cooperation. Whereas the Southern Wayne County Regional Chamber, SWCRC, representing twenty-one communities in most of the same DCC area, works in cooperation with the DCC on legislation that affects this entire region. Whereas DCC and SWCRC have been working together as a united voice to get our regional economy restarted and on track while protecting the health and safety of our citizens, in addition to our representatives in Lansing and Washington, working to provide critical resources for our area. We will need to focus on strong and effective initiatives to encompass the whole of our area. And whereas we share common bonds linked to public policy issues or identities that may be affected by legislation, likely to result in a desire to share a united regional congressional district and equally establish, establish state legislative districts within the region to ensure, in order to secure a more effective representation. Whereas the Down River Mutual Aid, DMA, was created more than fifty years ago in nineteen sixty-seven in order to formulate the cooperative relationships that already existed between and among police and fire departments throughout the region for public safety. DCC serves as the administrator for DMA. For generations, communities had assisted each other when a neighbor called for help, providing backup when police officers were stretched thin during a crisis or sending additional firefighters to battle blazes that threaten a community. But with the creation of DMA, that help grew to include a number of more sophisticated services that no single department or city could afford, such as, could offer, such as creating a regional SWAT team, a crisis negotiation team, an underwater search and rescue team, parentheses dive team, drug enforcement team, the Down River Auto Theft Team, and a uniform police task force. Other efforts DMA includes DMA nine-one-one and radio communication services. And whereas DCC and SWCRC share historic economic interests associated with a contiguous area on a map, together representing communities along the Detroit River from River Rouge and along the southeastern border to Rockwood and westernly from Dearborn, Huron Township, Van Buren Township, and Belleville down to Wayne Monroe County line. And whereas the congressional and state legislative district boundaries must be drawn according to existing municipal boundaries and shall not divide municipalities or their constituents into separate districts of representation. And whereas it is our priority to support efforts to realign, redistrict our area to the strength of bringing all these communities together to benefit the region as a whole. Therefore be it resolved that City Lincoln Park supports the DCC Board of Directors and the SWCRC to encourage the congressional redistricting to encompass this region with the same representation. I'll move on this. Okay, discussion?
Your honor, if I may?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I've been involved in politics, I think, maybe a little bit longer than most of the people over here. And I would just like to give you a little history lesson, that at one time, Lincoln Park was divided into three different state representative districts. It was absolutely devastating to us, trying to get anything accomplished, trying to get our point of view. And for this to happen again would be very hurtful to our city. And this, this, we must fight this at all costs.
Yes, I, I agree with that. And we are, Down River is basically one, one area there. So I think our representation should reflect that. Further discussion? All right, then court call the roll.
Mayor Carrance?
Yes.
Councilperson Ross? Yes, sorry, right?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
Okay. I almost forgot, it says accounts and claims payable, can't do that. So we have two items in this forthcoming resolution where the checks have been released for due date. They are Signature Ford LM for two new Ford Explorers for the PD and Blue Cross October twenty-twenty-one retiree med ADV plans retirees and actives. Resolve that accounts and claims payable for those items greater than twenty-five thousand dollars be approved as follows. Blue Cross Blue Shield, October twenty-twenty-one retiree med advanced plans, retiree and actives, one hundred ninety-four thousand three hundred and eighty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. Signature Ford LM, two new Ford Explorers for PD, sixty-nine thousand one hundred and eight dollars. BBNT Governmental Finance, two thousand nineteen road bond interest payment, ninety-six thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. GV Cement, twenty-twenty-one concrete reconstruction program, two hundred and twenty thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-five cents. GFL Environmental, October twenty-twenty-one city dumpsters, and October twenty-twenty-one residential curbside and recycling, two hundred and four thousand eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-six cents. Great Lakes Contracting Solutions, twenty-twenty-one Howard and Abbott Street Reconstruction, sixty-four thousand thirty-three dollars and ninety-two cents. Hennessy Engineers Incorporated, General Consulting, EPA Risk and Resiliency, Resilience Assessment Storm Event, May one, two thousand nineteen. Water Distribution's Operations Services, River Drive Reconstruct, Ford Boulevard, Emmens Avenue. SRF Sewer Rehabilitation Program, Lafayette Water Main Relocation, twenty-twenty-one CDBG Concrete Reconstruction, twenty-twenty-one Sanitary Sewer Lining Project. SRF, and twenty-twenty-one Concrete Sexing Program, Howard and Abbott Paving Project, twenty-twenty-one Concrete Reconstruction Program, twenty-twenty-one Asphalt Resurfacing Lead Service Line Replacement, seventy-nine thousand one hundred and ninety dollars and thirty cents. MERS, September twenty-twenty-one, defined benefit, two hundred and forty-six thousand nine dollars and seventy-one cents. PNT Institutional Investments, twenty-twenty-one slash twenty-twenty-two Police Fire Pension Payments, ARC, two million eight hundred and fifty thousand fourteen dollars and sixty-eight cents. City Riverview, August and twenty-twenty-one Dumping Service, twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and sixty-seven dollars and twenty-seven cents. I'll move on this. Go ahead. Okay, discussion? Okay, then court call the roll.
Councilperson Ross?
Yes.
Higgins?
Yes.
Dupre?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Salsedo?
Yes.
Tobin?
Yes.
And Mayor Carrance?
Yes. Okay, we now move on to the city manager's report, Mr. Grisant?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, going to start quickly by talking about shape of one of our parks. They've gotten some complaints about Quant Park recently. And so I actually met with the resident there and kind of walked through and looked at a bunch of things. And so we asked, I had asked that we get some quotes for some vegetation removal and some weed spraying in the parking lot, try and start getting some stuff done this fall before, before winter so that spring will be a little easier to maintain. So hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we're going to see a little bit of improvement for snow flies at Quant Park. And then the spring, we should be looking a lot better because Lincoln Park North is doing a fantastic job of the two fields they're maintaining. And, you know, I don't want, I don't want them to get discouraged. They need, they need to see that we're helping out because they're doing a really good job. And I think it's pretty much one guy. I think it's just Dave doing most of the work. So want him to know that we've got his back because the park's been around for a very long time and we hope we can continue. Do want to touch on those water main breaks? Sunday was, was really unbelievable. And Councilman Higgins, you were asking earlier about if there was an event or anything. That was kind of my first question when I, when I got behind Kroger, when I was talking to John. It was, what is going on? There's got to be something happening for these, these water main breaks to be happening so close together. But also on that, it was a good example of the reason for ensuring good solid site plan review and, and following building code and all of that because a good solid site plan review would not have allowed those transformers to be built and placed right above a water main. And we, as, as they're being placed back, they're not... And we, as, as they're being placed back, they're not being placed in the same spot, but these are the types of things we run into sometimes, as a good reminder. You know, it does take a little extra time sometimes to go through site plan review, but it's there for a reason. Last few things I'd like to touch on, we did have some interviews last week for some old positions. One was in the water office, and I do believe we also had one for DPS Labor. And then tonight, you guys took the first steps in one of the biggest, biggest projects we're gonna be doing over the next little bit with the Emmons and Lincoln Pump Station. These are the first steps of utilizing the federal funding, and the, these are really important projects that we need to get done, get them right, and move into the now 21st century. So, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions anybody may have.
To the chair?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, I ask you to give me a report on the marijuana businesses. I am being besieged, it's been a long time since the voters asked, and we want to know what's going on.
Right, and I do appreciate the heads up on that. So, yes, brief rundown here, as we all know, a voter initiated proposal happened in November of 2019 and was approved. And while the proposal gave us kind of an outline of what the voters wanted, it didn't accompany with it a licensing ordinance, which is something we would need to do to be able to opt in, to allow for marijuana licenses in the city. So we did have two major ordinance changes we needed to do. One was to the marijuana licensure ordinance, and this, this part was what became Chapter 853 of the city's code. That was adopted in September of 2020. And then the second ordinance change that needed to happen was, was the zoning ordinance, which we got through and got done, and this was made, this change was made in October of 2020. So even with, even with some of the personnel transitions that took place, even with COVID, we were able to get those ordinances done and ready to go within a year of the voter initiated proposal. Unfortunately, before we could do the licensure, the, the actual licensure lottery, an early winter COVID surge hit, which effectively knocked out a good chunk of the first floor of City Hall. And that delayed the process until right as we were getting into the holiday season. So coming out of the holiday season, we, we started planning for the lottery, which ended up taking place in February. The winners were notified, and they began their efforts to finalize their licenses, and they do have a year to try and get that done. So once we selected those who won the lottery and had the provisional licenses, the process has not been any, that much dissimilar from any other business, or any other large scale development in the community. Something like this is going to require a planning commission approval for site plan, gonna have to have architectural drawings and all of that, and going from concept to development takes some time. At this point, one of the two licensees has had their site plan approval, is ready to go, they just need to pull building permits for the work they need to do. The other, the other site is still struggling to properly provide the information needed for site plan review, and I do believe the building department, planning, they're working together to try and get that done. So hopefully, hopefully we should be seeing something soon. I, I'm not sure exactly how much construction is needed for the one that's at the construction part of the process, but hopefully it won't be too much longer. So I hope that answers any questions that's out there. At this point, we're, the developers, it's mostly on them to, to make sure they're doing, doing what they need to do to get development done.
James, do they have a deadline that they have to complete everything by?
I do believe Kerry can correct me that they were given a year.
I believe that is correct. I would have to go back and double check it, I haven't looked at it in a little while, but that, that seems to ring.
Mm-hmm. And what, what? They have a little bit of time to, to start, and then they have a year to finish, I believe.
Okay, what, what happens if they don't meet the, the guidelines? Do you know?
I believe we go to the next one on the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, then, but they're working towards that, and things look positive for them to, to complete that, right?
Absolutely.
Is that what I heard? Okay. Councilman Higgins, I didn't mean to interrupt, do you have more, sir?
No, no, I was, I wanted to be clear and set out, because I have been, had so many questions, and this is, it's been a long process, but it, it needs to be finished. That's all.
Anything else for the City Manager?
For the chair, please?
Yes, go ahead.
I have just a quick question, James. How long is the GFL contract for recycling?
So, this was, was talked about, I think, last meeting, and our city clerk corrected me, I do believe it's until September of 2024 at this point.
Thank you.
To the chair, your honor, please.
Council President, go ahead.
Yes, well briefly, James, in regards to the deep gas evaluation report, like what safeguards have been put in place since Gov HR came in, you have a final costly evaluation, et cetera, et cetera, what, what's going on with that?
Um, so I think the next step is gonna be to schedule a study session to go over the findings of the report. I'm also trying to schedule a meeting, these water main breaks have been getting in the way, with the DPS leadership to kind of go over some of the stuff that's in it, and start coming up with plans that we can present to you as a council.
All right, thank you.
To the chair, your honor?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
James, just one question. Is the Wing County Vaccination Clinic still going, or is it done?
Um, I do not believe they renewed, I would have to double check with Dennis, but I do not believe they, they continued the lease after September 30th, as that was the end of their, their lease, their fiscal year ended. I think that was a clean break time.
Dorian, would you have that information? Oh, she might have walked away, I'm sorry, go ahead, sir.
I, I wanted to unmute, I'm sorry. I believe they're right, that September 30th was the end, ending deadline. I did not see anything come through from Dennis that they were gonna renew.
Thank you.
To the chair?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Um, at the last meeting, we were, it was discussed about getting quotes for new sweepers, and we would have another study session on that, has anything happened with that?
Mayor, mayor and council, could I answer that?
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Uh, I've requested from the Bell Company, and I was anticipating bringing that before or supplying this to the, the mayor and council for the next council meeting. I have not yet received that information.
Okay, thank you. Also, at the last meeting, you said that all the concrete was cleaned up in front of the Kennedy Memorial and the, the park there, and it's not. It's still kind of messy, and there's cement there, and every time, because I live right there, I drive by, the safety tape, tape is down, and I just have real concerns someone's gonna get hurt over there. Can you update me on that, please?
If I could, the, our loader has since broken down, the loader has been repaired. Now we're ready, now that it's dried out a little bit, we were gonna try to get the last, the load and half, loaded out and hauled away, but now we've had this rain, so that'll delay it a little bit more, but, uh, the rain wants to put a park, uh, equipment there, so we've got to get the concrete removed, and we have to fill in the hole where the concrete was.
Okay, yeah, because when I was driving past the other day, there were, were people working on their yard, and they were taking their yard debris and throwing it in the air, which I don't think is a really good idea. So, the only other thing I have is, James, there's, I've gotten two messages about people trying to open businesses here in the city, and that they've turned in all the paperwork, and then it's just a dead end. One has been waiting for two months, another one's for about a month, and I'm hoping we can get something done, so these people know if they have to do anything further, or if they can open up the businesses. The one address is 2617 Dix, the other address I did not write down, but I can send it to you tomorrow.
Yes, please, then I can look into it.
Yeah, they're, they're ready to go, and they have heard nothing. So other than that, one more thing is, can you make sure the grass is cut before Saturday at Memorial Park for the zombie apocalypse?
I got you.
Thank you.
Hopefully, hopefully it stays dry enough to be able to get, get to it. I was, I was looking this afternoon, and it looks like tomorrow may be about our window to get it cut.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further for the City Manager?
Yeah, to the chair, if I may.
Yes, sir.
Uh, yeah, wait, James, whatever happened to the police traffic thing we were looking at? I know there was some discussion, and we talked about money, and we got the money from the government, saying about if we'd have any money, whether to put some money in a bank like, so that we could look at getting officers for the traffic division, but, you know, not paying for them upfront, but putting money away, so we got one, or one, or two, or whatever, we could do something. Has that died, or is that still in the process, or?
I don't remember any talk about putting money away to do it, but it was, the, the talk was, as we were moving forward, to, to look at doing it for the next year's budget. That was what I got out of the conversation. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Well, to the chair, I'd just like to make sure it doesn't get dropped, if it does, we're done with it, if not, and some timeframes of where we can make a look and see how it says, it does get confused and, and off the schedule, so we can pursue it on a timely manner. That's what I was asking, so.
Right, I just, I would again caution anybody about the federal funding and hiring, and doing anything that would be a long-term expense with one-time money.
Which, uh, which has two other issues, the alleys. What's our game plan? We allocated $300,000 or $330,000, and I'm looking for a game plan. I mean, are we working this part of the city, these alleys, we doing these, so many alleys today, so many tomorrow? Is, is, what are we doing? I mean, the money is there, obviously.
Yes, the money is there. It's a, a project that is gonna take a couple of weeks. We just allocated it two weeks ago, but the, so we've got to evaluate the alleys, identify the worst of them. We have upped the enforcement of neighboring properties already, and we are, we're in the evaluation stage. We, we've got a, gonna have to find a contractor to come in and clean up the stuff that is our responsibility as we go through. So we have to know what we have before we can do that.
Well, the reason I'm asking is that we're getting in October already, and there is a lady that wrote us a letter, we all got it, that's right by where they put the new car wash in on Dix and Emmons, and that alley behind her is one of the ones she would have cleaned up because she moved there, and it's all blah, blah, blah. So I'm, I'm looking for, you know, maybe some, uh, brine, bron, bron, bronsteining items to get going, to coordinate with the ordinance officers, or the DPS, or the Building Department, whatever it is, to get some of this stuff done. And the reason I'm saying that is that there are plenty of stuff in the city to do it. It's just a matter of fact, if we go in over there and start, you know, getting it done, so to speak, so. I just wanted to make sure, what I'm trying to say is that if we don't, if we do a couple areas, then at least we can get them built, you know what I'm saying?
Right, absolutely. That's the intent.
Yeah, because otherwise what happens is that we could get lost. The final thing is the, what's the update in the Building Department? We talked about bringing in a house, we're gonna have some meetings and some dates, you know, sent back to the council about how we're doing and what's going on.
Right, again, that study session was two weeks ago, we've started coordinating with the third-party contractor to try and, and hired a few, hired a few actual issues out, because if, if we're gonna go through a hybrid method, we are still gonna need them on board. So it's gonna take a little bit of time to really navigate that, but that's, that's kind of where we're at at this point. Should be having a meeting this week or next with, with them to continue the discussion.
Yeah, go ahead.
I'm all about meeting, because I'm gonna get this thing done. We've got the momentum, we have the money, we have the licenses to fix. The last question I got is, how many cards, access cards, do we give to Gosh Brothers for the, the tollway down to DPS?
Um, a document I have is, is pretty old, so I don't want to give out that information until I confirm it, but I, it's something I can look into for sure.
Right, I'd also like to, in that process, and it happens in every company, who they're assigned to, if they each gotta have an individual card. A lot of corporations, they give you one, three, or four, and you switch them around, that way you don't have too many players out there. But if you do give them out to the individual, I sure would like to know who the individual is and the card number, so if you would do that when you get a chance. Other than that, I'm done, your honor. Thank you.
Okay, I think that's, was, was all, go ahead.
I have a continuing question on my colleague, Mr. Kelsey's questions. The card keys for the DPS, I, I would like to know if there is a list of who has those cards, period, and can, can we get a, a list of who has the cards?
I will confirm that we can, that, that, yes, that there's, there is a list somewhere. I think between DPS and the PD, we can, we can have a list, and we can get the information out.
I, I think that's something the City Hall should have an updated list at all times. That's all, your honor.
Okay. Then, thank you, Mr. Crisand. We'll now move on to Department Head Report. This meeting is our City Assessor, Robert Su. So, Bob, Robert, are you with us?
James, can you turn on screen sharing?
Yeah, hang on one second.
You should be good now. Can you see it?
Not yet.
Nope. Okay, bear with me. How about now?
No.
No. Okay, well, since this is a failure and everybody's tired, uh, everybody's got handouts from us, you know. So, what's Newness Assessing? And trying to stay awake, we'll be brief. First, um, for the first time ever that we can find, we received no state principal residence exemption denials for Lincoln Park and for Melvindale. In order to accomplish this, we've been working with the City Clerk's Office and the Building Department to cross-checks to eliminate state Treasury Department principal residence exemption denials. Essentially, the reason we don't want them to do it is because if they do the denial, they get 70% of the, the captured funds. If we do the denial, we get 70%. So it's just purely money. And our next issue is our AMAR, and we're, we're gonna talk about it again, just because of the sheer amount of work that it took to get to this point, but, um, we received two perfect scores. I've included the letters from the State of Michigan for both Lincoln Park and for Melvindale. I just wanted to congratulate the staff for the huge amount of work that it took to put this out and to get it right, and it was a daunting task. Moving on, sales, 2021 to date. We've Moving on, sales, 2021 to date, we've processed 844 deeds. We have 26 commercial sales for, in excess of $12 million. 431 residential sales in excess of $49 million. Okay, and the overall number of sales is down from last year just because there are far fewer, um, homes to sell. The real estate people have been beating our doors down trying to find, you know, houses to sell. It's a very hot market and the sales are extremely high. We've finished our preliminary analysis for the land values and the ECFs and it looks like a lot of gobbledygook, um, the land value and ECF analysis to date. The, the big one I'd like you to note is the apartment ECF and now this is just changing the values in the book. It's not magic, it's not some kind of economic forecast, but based on the sales, that's a 46% increase in buildings, which is a huge number. Um, and this is just the current year analysis. We use a two-year study. This is just to illustrate current sales. PTA fines billed in Lincoln Park, we've billed $18,985 and in Melvindale, $8,300. Uh, we do this because the law requires us to. If you go over 45 days for your P, for your PTA paperwork, you're charged $5 a day to a maximum of $200 for residential and it's considerably higher for commercial. Um, the staff, again, has done just incredible work to play catch-up on this because it's a difficult thing to, to track because it's a 45-day process, but we get hundreds of these things a month and so you have to track each one individually. Staffing, since our last report, we have added a new time, part-time person. Her name is Sandy Smith. Stop by and say hi to Sandy. Other things that we're working on, um, missed uncappings, uh, this is primarily Melvindale. We have a few that we've caught from 2019 prior to the staff and I coming on board. We have P R E homestead denials that we're working with. One of you asked about alley issues. We're working with that too because there's a whole lot more to this than, than I think anybody realizes. Um, we've done appraisal reviews, we've done sales appraisal cross-checks, um, and that's added, um, a substantial amount of money to the taxable value because we're finding things that people didn't pull permits for. And so some of them are safety issues that we've turned over to the building department, but most of them are just things that, you know, we, we find when we look at the new sales and go, huh, there was a full bathroom in a basement that's completely finished down there and we don't have a permit. So that goes on the roll as we find them. And the last thing is personal property audits and reviews and that's an, this is an ongoing thing. We hit it pretty hard when we first started. It slowed down a little bit because everybody's kind of noticing we're drawing lines in the sand and making people actually do what they're supposed to do. And we'll entertain any questions.
Okay, thank you, sir. Do we have, uh, questions for our assessor?
For the Chair, your honor?
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Well, first, can I just say congratulations?
Thank you.
And, let's see, the, when you talk about land value and ECF, can you, can you tell us what the abbreviation ECF is?
It stands for something that has, it has nothing to do with. It's, it's economic condition factors and all it, and it sounds really, wow, is that technical? It's not. You're changing numbers in a book.
Okay.
Based on local influences. Um, that's part of the problem with the AMRs is everybody gets caught up in, oh my goodness, this is some kind of, you know, magic. It's really not. And we've worked really hard to make the magic go away and this is just a whole lot of work and a lot of number crunching.
Well, thank you. That's all I got.
You're welcome.
Okay, anything else for the, for the assessor? All right. Oh, go ahead.
Sure. I was just gonna say through the Chair, Bob, thank you for the wonderful paperwork, all the nice little things when you went browsing through the neighborhood alleys. Like, uh, maybe we should keep you out of there or keep you in there, I'm not sure which.
Uh, I, I think you kind of want both.
Yeah.
Um, because some of them are, are serious issues. The, the swimming pool on, on the open alley, that's kind of a huge area problem. Um, it's a safety issue. And the other things, it's kind of our job and we want to keep everybody safe and happy and, you know, that's why we're working so hard with everybody to try and figure out what's going on with them because we have old abandonments that really can't be abandoned. Uh, the one with the four garages facing the abandoned street where you can see the picture of the storm sewer right at the bottom of the picture? We can't abandon that because, well, A, there's a storm sewer and B, there are four garages that come directly out into that abandoned street. And it's kind of unfair to, to go to the people on the, as you're looking at the picture on the right-hand side, oh, you guys have to pay for all of the paving. And the people on the left-hand side, well, that's 25 feet of frontage that we have to add value for. And this stuff hasn't been looked at this way before and it really has to be. And, you know, the, the white fence issue, that's another one that, you know, that was done in 67 and they abandoned it, what they thought was an alley, but it was never an alley, it was a road. And there's one garage that comes out and has to go somewhere, so he's essentially trespassing into the subdivision alley in order to get out of his garage. And then somebody built a big white fence and John knows all about this because we've visited him with this and, uh, the poor lady who lives next door, you know, if Billy's riding his bicycle down the street and she pulls out of her driveway, well, Billy's in real trouble because there's this big white fence and she can't see. I tried using my pickup truck just to see if I could see over the fence and I couldn't see over it. So her Honda, I think she has a Chevy now, um, is, that's not a good thing and it's not safe. So we're working through and, you know, just like the mayor came down and kind of told us, we found some, but now we have to sit down with John Kazoo and figure out, okay, what actually is under this dirt? Because we don't want to abandon things that we can't abandon.
I appreciate it, Bob. It was very enlightening, especially the pictures that really helped put it all out. Thank you very much. Thanks, Bob.
Okay, anybody else for, uh, for the assessor?
Yes, big thank you for all the work they're doing.
Yeah, I concur with that. They've done an excellent job for us, professionalizing and getting us back online. Um, anything else though, forum? Yeah, they have to stop by and say hi to Sandy. So we will
Yes.
Move on then. Thank you for your report, sir. We're still waiting for the, the screen share, but maybe later. All right, so, uh, we'll move on to, uh, citizens communications. So James, if you could, uh, make it to where they would be able to unmute themselves, we've with, um, time has come for citizen communications about, um, city affairs.